Good evening and welcome to the Monta Moi Regional School Committee meeting of October 28th, 2015. First on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from October 14th, 2015.
Someone?
Second?
Second.
Are there any changes, additions, corrections? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those staying? Okay, so move. Next on the agenda is public comment. Mr. Houston?
Just a very quick one since we're coming up to the 11th hour of the 11th day of the 11th month and our Veterans Day celebration, I just thought I'd take a second to mention that as the history department does on a regular basis, we encourage the kids to participate in all of these civic celebrations, Memorial Day, Veterans Day. And as an enticement, it may be worth reminding some of the parents who might be viewing that the kids, depending on the teacher, can do an extra credit assignment associated with the Veterans Day event. In my case, the kids write a summary of what the keynote speaker has to say at the event. And they can do that at either the Harwich event in Island Pond Cemetery or at the Chatham event down at the Rotary down in downtown. So just wanted to get the word out there that sometimes the kids are challenged to get up on their day off by the 11th hour, but maybe with a little nudge from the parents, they'll do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Next on the agenda is recognitions.
Just a really quick recognition. I want to compliment the high school staff and the students who put together the Washington Wizards, not Washington Harlem Wizards game last week. And they did it the year before as well, but it was a nice opportunity to see so many of our elementary school families here with kids. And when I was talking with Bill, I know a number of the students that were here had taken elementary families who, this was their first time coming into the building to walk around the building and were sort of reporting back that they were really impressed with what they saw. But it was just one of those good clean family fun events. It was nice to see again staff out there and our administrative team ably representing me when I was double booked. We would have won this year had I been able to be there.
Who was the leading scorer for the home team?
I got my three pointers though. I didn't care. I was going for two, but I didn't get the second one.
So Shay, living to dream again?
Next on the agenda, reports and discussions. First is Monta Moi Regional High School Field Trip to China, April 2017. Do we have someone here to make a presentation on that?
I can just ably go through the packet. My son came home to pitch this at the house because he has Mrs. Gao this year and has hung on our refrigerator a field trip, what's on page two in your packet, which is the tour price quote. But it is to take high school students during April vacation a year from now, not this school year, but next school year, to Beijing, China. It is, the price is going to be approximately $3,200. And because of the price to get the families from Kitco to China, she wanted to make sure that those that were interested had time and their families had time to prepare for the trip. And also, as I understand from Mrs. Gao, she has an expectation that the students are going to be doing a lot of the fundraising to support the cost of that trip. So she's looking at having approximately 15 students go with a chaperone for every six students. They would be going to Beijing, Xi'an, Shanghai. And again, it's the vacation week and it's going with EF Tours, which is a company that the school district uses to travel abroad to other destinations.
Is this the same group that Mr. Gifford used when they went to that conference?
Yes.
Yes.
Did you say the length of the trip? Oh, my, it's just April vacation, just that week?
So, yes, so the dates that they have requested are Thursday, April 13th through Friday, April 21st. And the... And it's, I guess, left somewhat sliding that the tour company fits it within that timeframe in part based on what the travel costs are going to be.
There's always a little fluctuation as to when the departure and arrival dates might be.
How much do students be selected or are they self-selected?
It would be students who are interested in attending. So I know that she has a number of students in this year's cohort that she has that are interested in attending. And I think that Mrs. Gao's hope is that this could become an every other year type of trip for the district.
So would there be more than her number 15 or so that wanted to do it? Would first priority go to upperclassmen or would that be extended to larger numbers if they wanted to?
I suspect that we're this far out that she can probably work with EF Tours to accommodate a larger group.
Any other questions? Looking for approval? We'll mark for our next meeting. Everybody have a chance to really read the packet. Next on the agenda is technology update. Deb Morgan.
Okay. I think there's some... Okay, so just here to give an update. Hi, everybody. I'm Deb Morgan, Director of Technology at Monta Moi. And I'm here to just update us on our progress as far as technology, specifically starting at the beginning of this school year. So I wanted to start with our summer projects that we had to do. We did a five-year plan for technology for the capital improvements. And this summer, we completed all the plans for the summer. And that means that we were able to get 30 laptops to the Chatham Elementary School staff. And we were able to get 50 laptops set up and configured and handed out to the Howard Elementary School staff. Also, we expanded the wireless at the middle school. And that included 10 additional wireless access points, so that building was almost complete. And then we procured and installed six Epson Brightlinks at the middle school. So that means every single classroom at the middle school now has been completed with interactive technology. And we purchased 114-inch Chromebooks for the middle school in carts so they could move them around and all the classrooms could share them. That's why the Chromebooks need the wireless, so we had to beef up the wireless in order for everything to work together. So that was part of our five-year, one year of the five-year plan, which is completed. I have copies of all the, what we're planning on doing for the next four years, if you want to see that. And I believe Mr. Carpenter has already handed that out to you, but I have copies with me if you want to see what's planned for the next couple of years. So basically, the responsibilities of the technology department includes all the technology needs of, as of today, 153, 1963 students, staff, and four different buildings. Data, data, data. That's a big part of our job is working in that area. We're also responsible for the infrastructure of all the buildings to make sure the wiring, the networks, the Wi-Fi, the servers, everything is working inside the building and between the buildings. We also do the hardware and software procurement and support across the district. And we take care of a lot of the communication needs of the district, including the website, email, et cetera. And also, we keep track and monitor the security of all the systems and the data. And all the clients, students, staff, we take care of their hardware, software needs and support and repairs. So as far as the data, just don't need to hash through this, but just kind of flip through some of the things that we do work on. And probably the first one is the most important, is reporting to the Department of Education. Of course, Aspen, everybody's familiar with that. We take care of the Connect Ed Notification System, Teach Point, which is Educated and Evaluating System. We take care of the Virtual Gateway, which is finding out what is going on with Department of Human Services and our students. And we match it together. We match it up with them so they make sure they get free lunch or reduced lunch if they need to. That's something that's done three times a year. The new NutriKids point-of-sale lunch program, we assist with that. And we help with the setup of student assessment programs. And sometimes we help with some of the student learning programs also. We also do the Moodle online curriculum at the middle school. We take care of the needs for that. And part testing we did last year, we still don't know whether it's going to happen yet this year. I think until November 18th is a big day. But we did it across the district last year, as you know, and technology was a big part of that. So we had to make sure we had the right equipment, the right abilities, the training, the students, the data. It was a big project, but it was very successful. So if they decide to do it again, I think we're ready. So the infrastructure, we try to monitor troubleshooting and we're trying to be more proactive and less reactive. We're starting to move in that direction. So this is kind of the things we work on. We have a wide area network because we're pretty far apart. We have a lot of virtual servers, VLANs, access points, servers, all kinds of equipment that we are monitoring troubleshooting and trying to make sure hopefully nothing goes wrong with them, which it does, of course. So procurement's a big part of technology's job, is making sure we buy the right thing for the right amount of money and the right needs of the people. We try to take advantage of everything we can. A lot of nice group buying programs across the state that we use. We use E-Rate as much as possible. And we deploy, refurbish, and reuse a lot of everything we possibly can. This shows actually students using refurbished equipment from one building to another. The communication piece, we've been concentrating on the Aspen program because it allows us, teachers, staff, administration, parents, students, everyone, to kind of be on the same page as communication. We have the discipline piece, what's going on with assignments, what's going with grading, what's going with attendance. So everybody can be seeing the same things and be in on the conversation. So right now, Monta Moi and Aspen, we have 7,098 users that have their own username and password to log into Aspen. It's used a lot by a lot of people, obviously. These are some of the things that Aspen has done for us and we use Aspen to do. Just kind of some of the aspects we're using and we are expanding all the time on what we're doing using Aspen for. Those of you who haven't seen it, this is what it would look like if you were a student looking at Aspen. You'd go in and you would see your attendance, your... Oh, I'm sorry. This is what a family would see, a parent would see. A parent sees something different than a child sees, the student. Not much different, but a little different. So the family can see attendance, grades, assignments, and conduct at the middle school and high school. A student can see a little bit more. They can see a lot of their schedule. They can see, they can request courses. So the students have a little bit more capabilities than the family does. So the website. Am I going too fast? Okay. So the website is ongoing. Right now, I just opened up the dashboard, took a snapshot of it. We have 388 total site pages on our website. It's big. We have 26 current contributors. 26 people are trained and a lot of them are contributing very nicely. Do we need to do more and better? Of course, always. The website can always be improved upon. So we're always looking for ideas and for assistance and people that want to contribute to the website. So we take care of security. We make sure, we kind of monitor and hand out and reset passwords and usernames for a lot of different areas. It's important. It's just security. We also have three firewalls that we, that make sure, that kind of protect our network, protect our students. We have to have a firewall in compliance with CIPA, and that is Children's Internet Protection Act. So we have three of them, so it's good. And we have security cameras and we monitor and assist with the security cameras here at the high school. The middle school is pretty much taken care of by other people. So as far as clients, that we do the hardware and software support, we have almost 400 desktops, almost 900 laptops, almost 1,000 Chromebooks, printers, iPads, 140 classrooms with interactive projectors, and then other things. It's a lot of equipment that's being taken care of by, not a very big group of people, actually. It shows our students in the classroom at the high school, a typical classroom with their Chromebooks and the interactive projector, really nice setup that's going very nicely at the high school. So since July 1st, the technology support staff has had 5,501 help desk requests come to them. And as of today, we have 161 of them open. We process a lot of help desk tickets. So I'll kind of just give you another idea about how the service department of the technology is going, what we have for devices, buildings, users. And we actually were fortunate to have an additional staff member given to us this year, which has made it, just started about a month ago, it's going to make a huge difference to have somebody else helping us out. So coming attractions, what are we looking for to do in the future? Some of the things up here that it's part of the five-year plan is that we need to replace the interactive projectors in Howard Elementary School. They're eight or nine years old and they're failing very quickly. We need to replace the laptops for the middle school staff. Those are about eight or nine years old. Just to assist us in running the whole department, I believe we need to increase the use of cloud resources and applications, take as much as we can off our plate and have somebody else take care of it for us. We need to expand the wireless at CBS and HES. I've kind of held back a year for that because as of next year, E-Rate will now pay 50% of upgrades to your infrastructure in that area, which is a new thing for them, which is huge. It's going to be a big project. I'd like to get additional Chromebook cows. Those are working out really nicely. The middle school would like another one. They like two, which I have one on its way, so they'd like another one. And I believe Howard Elementary and Chatham Elementary could use more also. I don't think they would refuse them. Continued expansion of Aspen, the use of Aspen, the abilities of Aspen. We're using a good part of it, but there's more that it can do. Expansion of the website, the depth of it, the breadth of it, more pages, deeper information, more information, more usage. And to explore other sources of our internet access, right now, we use Comcast. They were pretty much our only choice at the time that we opened the school. But there are other people offering it and we may be able to do a bit better. Our three-year contract with Comcast, I believe, is up this summer. Okay, next up? So I think that's something that should be started to look at now. It's a lot of money, but it's very important. And they've done a great job. I have no complaints about Comcast at all, but they're expensive. And we could do better and get the same quality. And that's about it. Just like to thank everybody for supporting the technology department. It's been amazing having, yes, we were able to hire a part-time person last year to help with the data. That was huge. And also, we went from three temporary support people to two full-time people. That means we have one person in every building and that's been a huge, that will make a huge difference. As I said, one of the people just started about a month ago. Do we have any questions?
Mr. Russell?
After the infusion of the middle school on that first and second slide, what's the status of our middle school technology now?
It's actually in excellent condition. It is second best to this building. And it's got, so every classroom now has interactive technology, including the new classroom thing they built this winter, this summer. The teachers' laptops are the one thing that's not, that needs to be replaced. They have, let's see, four Chromebook carts. 80% of their building is, the Wi-Fi is beautiful. There's still some pockets that will need to be worked on next summer. We need to kind of see how it works out with the carts because they're rolling Chromebook carts around, opening them up, and all the Chromebooks are going on the Wi-Fi. So kind of seeing how it looks before we start making adjustments. That was just installed about a month ago. So the middle school's in great shape.
You know, I'm looking just at the two years of progress, notwithstanding this building having to be equipped. My last question, the Aspen training, which is sort of brand new and we launched it a year or so ago. How would you say parent training as well as staff training? As far as the staff, what percentage, because I would imagine I would be at some point down the line that close to 100% of staff would be using it so the linkage with parents would be consistent in uniform. So do you have...
Well, as far as teaching staff, classroom teachers, 100% of them use Aspen because they have to take attendance. So they all use it. Now, in the elementary schools, they are just entering their standards-based grade on their report cards at this time. So we have student attendance in elementary and we have their standards-based grades. That's just happened at the end of every term. As far as the middle school, in high school, the teachers are using it, have really upped it. They have a lot, a lot of them have their class pages where they're putting all their, you know, their curriculum. And they're all, they're doing the grading, pretty much all use the grading. And they all deliver report cards, the progress reports. So I would say the classroom teachers are probably, the middle and high school, close to 100%, if not 100%. Must be high 90s at this point. And the parents, parents are fine. The parents are, I can see them on there. I can see we have 7,000 people that are using it. That's enabled accounts. Never mind the disabled ones that happen to everybody all the time. But this is 7,000 enabled accounts. That's huge.
Thanks. Great job.
Brian, just to follow up on what I was hearing with questions. When you mentioned that the middle school teachers were going to be in need of new laptops and you also said this is a multi-year process of purchasing new materials, what year are they scheduled to?
There's next year.
Next year?
There would be next year.
Next school year?
Yes. Next school year. So they would be purchased at, I like to purchase them at the end of the summer because your warranty kicks in and you want that warranty to last for as long as you can. You don't want to buy them too early. So sometime in the middle of, to the end of the summer, they would be purchased for the middle school teachers.
What does "COW" stand for?
Computers on Wheels.
So I have two questions. One is, I don't believe I have a copy of that, Future Planning. I'd love to get...
I will give you, I have copies for all of you.
And the other thing...
It's a draft. It's five years and things happen in five years. But I kind of like what we should be thinking of in the future.
The other thing is, these people you have here, you're saying that one is in each building, right?
That is correct.
And do they do every one of those jobs in that building? Or do you have certain people specializing in certain aspects?
Both. Both. Pretty much everyone, you know, when a ticket comes in, we have one person that sends them off to the appropriate person. And sometimes somebody, you'll see somebody with a lot of tickets. So we'll send extra, so people do move around somewhat. As a matter of fact, Chatham Elementary only has somebody three days a week because it's such a small school. She goes to Howard Elementary two days a week. So we have two people Mondays and Fridays at Howard Elementary because it's a large school and it's in a little rough shape relatively. So it needs extra help. So there is some adjustments. And then people do specialize. Like we have somebody that's really good with blah, blah, blah. We'll say, how do you know there'll be a lot of talk? It's a great team. The four people are working so well together. They're really very excited and happy to be here. They're great.
What do you use for help desk software?
We use Spice Works. It's free and it's very good.
It works well?
Excellent. We did a lot of research before we chose, before we chose anything. And hands down, tech directors across the state, pretty much everyone says Spice Works. And even our engineers use it for all the companies that we use. Excellent.
Sure.
Free is good too. Very good.
Is there a particular person dedicated to the website or...?
That would be me.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Just a point of information when it comes to FY17 budget. We can't lose track that there was a chunk of capital that we had separated out as part of a debt exclusion during this, or a capital exclusion this past budget cycle in Harwich. And the technology needs that Deb's talking about to make sure that we continue moving forward and getting the middle school teachers their computers and upgrading the computer systems at Harwich Elementary School is going to be contingent upon us being able to fund capital in the upcoming budget years. And I know some of the conversations have been that there's not a want to see capital exclusions keep showing up on balance year after year. But we have to be cognizant of that as we go into the budget season.
It was my understanding that when we had to do that last year, that we were told we would be able to do some of this again this year. Am I incorrect? Am I incorrect?
As long as they fund it.
So what?
As long as it's funded.
Oh, you mean as long as the selectmen approve it?
Thanks, Deb.
And I will just drop off that five-year plan. Thank you.
And I was remiss, I totally skipped over Lainey. So she could come up and give us a presentation so she could bail on us.
Oh, we have a microphone tonight. Thank you. Hello. Okay. So just some, some happenings at Monmore High School lately. So first, the marine science class went on a field trip to the albatross fishing vessel and left out of the suit harbor last week. Today, we went on a field trip to Harwich Junior Theater to see Tequila Mockingbird. All of the English classes, so about a hundred and twenty kids went from the high school. Last weekend, the Young Women's Club participated in the breast cancer walk in Hyannis. Ms. Doyle took all of, I think it's twenty-two girls in her Young Women's Club. Also, a member of the Young Women's Club, Lauren Walsh, was chosen as a finalist in the mass poetry contest. And so we've all been voting for her. And if she wins, her poem will be on, in the T-trains in Boston. So it's pretty cool. Mr. Carpenter mentioned, but the Harlem Wizard theme was hosted by the junior class last week, which was a lot of fun. The National Art Honor Society inducted nine new members last week. And finally, the, the Stan Group, we leave next Friday for a weekend in DC to rally with our congressmen. So it'll be fun. Thank you very much.
Any questions? Thanks, Lainey.
Thanks.
We're going to circle back to the Monmore Regional High School field trip to China and hear from the person in charge.
I, I'm not late, first I have to really say. I got to the middle school. And I thought I'm seven minutes early. And I looked at the parking lot, I said, I cannot be here. And I run to the town hall, and there's nothing there. I thought, well, the last place would be this place. So anyway, as a teacher, we're never late, but I'm sorry for being late. No set of information, you pass. I heard that Scotty already talked about the China trip.
I was just setting up, warming up the crowd for you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. I have, I have the information. I'm here to introduce, to propose the China trip in 2017. And I'm the Chinese teacher, by the way, and my name is Tian Gao. And right now, we have sixty students in the program. Sixty. This is our second year, which is fabulous. And I feel like I'm ready to take them to China. And the program I present to you tonight, this yellow page, I got all the goodies, the highlights, I put them on one page. And then this is from the EF company about the trip. So the trip actually is nine days long. And by the time we get to China, and the company will take care of it. And for students, there will be two thousand, three thousand two hundred per person. And for adults, if adults want to come, and the price will be thirty-five hundred. The reason why I proposed earlier, because I want the, I want this project to be also the students' project. If they want something, they need to work for it. And I believe that if they want something, really, 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 really want something, they are going to come up with ideas. I think parents already support them quite a lot. And then for this program, I already told my students, rake your neighbors' leaves, shovel their driveway, and tell your parents you don't have to hire anybody to come to service the house. And you're going to do that. So anyway, we're, we're going to do a fundraising and try to help the kids to learn before they even get to China. So here is the proposal. And if you have any questions, you can ask me everything on this page. So I'm thinking about, if you prove this next, start from next week, I probably will have tried to get the parents and students together. And we're going to figure out how to do this. If you want to know whether I'm experienced, I did a trip, students to China ten times from ninth grade above. It's all boys because I used to teach at an all-boys school. And they don't know, even know how to pack. I'm so excited because I'm going to take girls. The girls can have them. I don't have to, I don't have to go each place and see the boys trying to sit on their junk, up and down in their briefcase. I said, what are you doing there? He said, well, I cannot close the briefcase. So anyway, I'm ready to do something. Sorry about being late, but I'm glad you're laughing. Yes.
My question is that if you have, what'd you say, sixty?
Sixty students in the program.
And then your plan is to take fifteen or more?
Sometime when the number is bigger, and our group will be the primary group, and other schools come along, they have to fit into our schedule. If we have a small number, we probably have to really be part of another large group. So I think among sixty students, right now, in my Chinese too, they are all excited. They want to go, and some of them, they are seniors, going to be seniors. And they are dreaming, and they are wishing that will be their senior present from their parents. And that's a, that's a really good one. The reason I didn't, the reason I didn't want to do this year is because it's still too early. This is the second year. And also, I feel like I don't really have too many seniors in my class. I don't really lose them. So I have more juniors, and by the time they are seniors, everything will be there.
So this is planned for every other year, you hope?
I think every other year, or maybe every other two years. Just to see how the number growing. And we also want to be mindful to other programs in the, in the school. And so that other trips, like in our department, we'll have trips to Spain and trips to somewhere. So it's not going to be every year. I will be losing my life if I do it every year. So I want to preserve that.
So my concern is that, you know, this might be a large amount of money for everyone to come up with. But if you had more than the fifteen, say you had thirty kids wanting to go, would you be able to do that?
I think so. The largest group I took is thirty-six students and adults. The, the number is limited by the bus. And you either have like a forty-person bus or fifty-four. But if you have less, smaller number, and you have fifty-four buses, and, and the cost will be going up. So that's why I always keep the number according to what they are handling. But with this group is that every student, for every six students, there will be one chaperone. So in that case, it's, it's, it's very good because safety is the number-one concern. And if nothing happened, that's the best. If there's other things happened along with that, it's all exciting, and that's even better. So I want to make sure that the safety is the number-one. Give parents and the school, and myself, that peace of mind.
So since the juniors and seniors probably would not have any other chance to go, but this trip? If there was a priority needed, would they get first priority?
They might, but I also want to say that I want to take the students who really want to go, who I trust them in the classroom. If I don't trust them in school, I'm not going to take them. I tell them. I already tell Phil, I said, you better grow up, otherwise I won't take you. So I have some motivation.
That's one of the chaperones.
Yes.
That problem myself.
Right. Another thing is that they are getting excited and they said, well, can my mom come? I said, no way, I'm not. I can take adults and take parents, but I would never put parents on the chaperone team just because, you know, the kids, you have to really know them. Otherwise, they find this hole, they say, well, you don't really know me. You don't even know what my name, they can get into trouble. So I want to put all those teachers who are in charge of this. And then we can work out the teacher.
Well, it sounds like you have us all covered. Thank you.
Oh, thank you very much. So that means approved?
Any other questions?
Great idea, I should tell them.
Oh, thank you.
We thank you for your addition.
We always vote the next meeting. So give everybody a chance to really read the information. And next time, we'll have a vote on whether it's approved.
Okay. So am I going to be here next time?
Nope.
Oh, I don't have to?
No, we'll just have a conversation amongst ourselves and take a vote.
Thank you very much. And thank you very much for having me here. And this has been a wonderful school. And I truly feel blessed and honored to be here. Thank you very much.
Well, good. Okay, back to item number four, preschool bus.
I guess there was a, there was a want to have a discussion about preschool busing. And I think there was a request from the committee to get a legal opinion, I emailed you, whether or not the fact that at the moment we are providing preschool busing for regular education students, the peer models, and for the special education students that we by law need to provide the busing for Chatham Elementary. But in Harwich Elementary this year, we are only providing it for the special education students in part due to what the ridership times would be if we needed to transport both the regular education students and the special education students. And as I emailed you, the, our, the district's legal counsel is indicating that there's nothing that's, that's against statute in how we're approaching it, nor is there anything against the, the school's regional agreement that, that we're violating.
Anybody have any input, Sharon?
We haven't had public comment yet. There wasn't a public comment.
Yes, it was.
Yeah, what?
Are there people here to speak on it?
I, if there are people here to speak on this, I'd like to hear what they have to say. I don't know if there are, but I do see a lot of people here on that.
It's fine, generally, it's only a public comment. But if there's someone that'd like to step up, I remind you that you have a five-minute limit for your comments.
Good evening. My name is Kathleen Giorgio. I'm the parent of four young children, and the, three are in the district right now. I'm a Harwich resident, Chatham taxpayer, Harwich taxpayer. This is the third child of mine to go through the integrated program. It's an incredible program. We feel really lucky to have been accepted into it. When our first child went in in two thousand and nine, fall of two thousand and nine, there was no cost in the Harwich Elementary program. No cost at all. And we thought we won the lottery because we had a fabulous program at no cost. And we drove him back and forth every day. And couldn't have been happier. Transition to kindergarten was seamless. Did two years there, enter my next child. And that was around regionalization time. When regionalization occurred, parents in the, in the program at the time were told, fair is fair. Chatham pays one hundred and fifty dollars a month for their program. Fair is fair. Harwich students will now pay the same amount. We acquiesced, one hundred and fifty dollars a month, no problem. About a month into it, a couple of, a few of us started to realize, well, hold on. Just having friends in Chatham, we knew that their kids were bussed back and forth every day. Fair is fair is where we, we took our approach to the assistant principal at the time, and principal, and were in turn supported. In fact, fair is fair. Harwich students can now get bussed back and forth. It's a lot for a working family to have that opportunity then. And it was one additional benefit that weighed on us in our decision when our third child came along into the program. And we looked at other programs and said, this is it. Because now, as a working family, you're getting about an hour extra to work. And I work from home. So the third child went in the program. Got one more down the pipe, but the third is presently in the program. Last year, she was bussed back and forth. And the bus, just to acknowledge, is a really important part of the school experience. It's an important part for an elementary school student. It's an important part to the pre-K experience also. It was a benefit to us and to the student. Had the bus out last year. And we're told, we got the call, the Friday, so school started on Monday, the tenth, I think. We got the call on Friday afternoon before school started that, hold on, it's going to be a couple of weeks before they iron things out in the bus. You know, it's not a guarantee every year. So we were, and okay, but it'll just take a couple of weeks. And so we made do, got a sitter. Because to take a child to the elementary school at nine o'clock, and when your child, your other children get picked up on the bus at eight forty-five, you've got a, there's a little bit of a logistic balance, of course. So we made it work. And we just cut up some meetings midday to get her because it was a half an hour difference from picking her up. Bottom line is, we've made it work. And then two weeks later, we were told, it's not going to happen. We were told that, in fact, Chatham, because there were a few more kids in Harwich, spread out more, that if we couldn't do all of them, we weren't going to do any of them. So none of the peer models would get bussed. I feel sort of like my preschooler when I say, it's not fair. But I come back and, you know, whatever legal opinions you have, and, you know, I guess we could get them too. I would say, as a taxpayer in both towns, it's not fair. It hasn't been clear about why and where are, when we needed to put up the one fifty a month, where that was specifically going. And I was told, oh, it was just to the general operation. I've been told that. I've been told by others, oh, no, 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 there's a certain earmark for that for preschool. So I, I would say, is my one fifty going, you know, could it be said that it's actually going to support the Chatham busing? I, I'd say fair is fair. It's got to be equal at both schools. If it's a, it's a significant benefit. Mr. Carpenter came back with some big numbers of how much a bus costs. So take it away from the Chatham program or add on. Right now, there, and to also add bus times, there's a big disconnect, and I realize, and I know Mr. DeVall's looking at his watch, there's a big disconnect on how much, on who's saying, oh, these bus times are big. Because the bus drivers, who we know, are saying to us, bus times aren't big. I don't know why they're not letting you go for it, but the bus times aren't big. They drive by my house back and forth every day. There's one child in the bus right now. Last fact to acknowledge, eleven kids in the Chatham preschool program. All of those kids are bussed. Chatham square miles, these are like numbers to think about. Twenty-four square miles is the area of Chatham, right? One bus, eleven kids. Harwich, thirty-two square miles, has two buses. And we're busing back between four and six kids in that. So divide that out. It's not proportionate math. So fair is fair. Take it away or add in, but fair is fair. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jeffrey Craig. I have two sons. One of, has already gone through the program. And I have one that just entered the program. I'm not going to reiterate some of the things that Kathleen has said. But obviously, he lost out on the bus. But the point I'd like to make, so I don't reiterate any of the tremendous facts that Kathleen said, is it's an integrated program. And the integration starts as soon as they get on that bus. Growing up as a, as a, as a, as a young man, you always had the stigma of the short bus. And I don't think I need to go into what that is. And when you have one kid or two kids by themselves on that bus, you're reinforcing that stigma. And I think that it's really important for us to realize that, you know, yeah, the program is great, we all know that. But it, a lot of the, the interaction that those kids have is when they're on that bus. And I think it's very important for us to realize that it's not just about, you know, kids on IEPs or kids that aren't on IEPs, that are peer role models. It's, it's about them both, and them both being together. You know, if you go to the time, you know, it's, you know, you drop them off at nine, and then you're picking them up at nine thirty, at eleven thirty? I mean, if you throw, add in the bus time, that actually is making more of a full day for them instead of just the instead of just the limited two and a half hours they have in the program. And I'm not saying that the program's bad. The program's fantastic, but so isn't the busing. And I think that integration starts as soon as they get on that bus. And I think it's very important for us to realize that it's not just, you know, parents like myself that work till 2:30 in the morning, that are up trying to drive their kid to school, but it's also those kids that are losing out on the interaction with their fellow peers. And I think that needs to also be looked at as well. Okay, thank you.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Morris, and I am fairly new to the area. My husband and I moved from Charro two years ago to Harwich. We own a pretty large business that services the entire Cape. We are Harwich taxpayers, and I deliberately chose to pull my son out of a private preschool to put him in the integrated preschool program. I am the mother of the one child that sits on the bus by himself, and is singled out, which is very upsetting, as you can probably see, to my husband and I. Quinn is a very shy child. He loves all his peers. They have all been very welcoming to him. He does have a slight speech delay. He gets along fabulously with everybody else. And he's sad because he rides the bus home alone, and he's starting to ask, "What's wrong with him?" Part of being in the integrated program is being made to feel like there's nothing different with you. You're not riding the short bus. You don't necessarily have a learning disability or a delay, but you're just one of the kids, you're one of the group, you're my buddy. Do you wanna come over and play? That makes a really, really big difference in a child's life. My husband and I felt it was very important, unfortunately, he could not be here, but that we spoke up as the other side of the program. I love the preschool program. I cannot say enough good things about it. We were paying very, very good money at a private school, but I wasn't getting what you get at the integrated program, which is, the children aren't different. He was different at the private program. Kids singled him out. They didn't play with him. He sat in the corner because he felt different, and he knew that they looked at him differently. And I can honestly say, since entering Harwich, this is his third and final year of preschool in the system. He doesn't get singled out. He isn't left behind. He's asked over for play dates. The kids play with him on the playground. I'm starting to know a difference in him this year because he's the only one on the bus. His buddy on the bus is Robin, who is probably in her 60s, very sweet lady. She sits with my son every single day and carries on a conversation because she said that they have noticed he's not the same kid this year on the bus. We drive by Kathleen's house. He knows that's where Molly lives. Why isn't Molly on the bus? Molly's my friend. We play on the playground. So, in all, I would really like all aspects to be taken into consideration, which I wasn't so sure everyone was looking at it from both sides, which is, yes, I understand that the peer group parents would love for their children to have this, but as an IEP child parent, I feel as though, honestly, I would love it because I feel like it would continue to help my son come out of his shell, do better with his speech. He talks to his buddies on the bus. He gets excited about like, "Oh, we talked about apples in school today." And a lot of that time, you don't get that in the classroom because you are paying attention to what the teacher is doing, what the lesson is, what the rules are. You have to wash your hands, et cetera. So, as an IEP parent, I am proposing that fair is fair, that if one school is allowed, that another school is allowed, and that everyone just kind of take into consideration, if it was your kid that was the IEP kid, that's the only one on the bus, what the conversation at your dinner table may be every single night because your child feels like he's different. Thank you.
Any comments from the board?
Sorry to say anything after that.
Right.
I know that there was a, I know there was some communication by letter or email between yourself and one of the parents. I forgot, sorry.
Kathleen Giorgio.
Yeah. So, just so that everybody's clear, or people are watching, could you summarize your response that you provided in that email? It would help me, it would help remind me what your response was.
It's been a while. Yeah, I can put it, I can put things into context. To make the decision that we, you know, that we ultimately made, Katie and I met with the management of the bus company just to get an understanding of, based on the request for transportation, what would the ridership times look like in Harwich? And, you know, just trying to, you know, trying to keep the ridership times in that, you know, that half an hour, 45-minute top, you know, range. And there are, you know, there are two buses that head out into Harwich. One has shorter ridership time, one, you know, one's closer to 45 minutes. On the Chatham side, the ridership time for the bus that's managed to go through a swath of Chatham. And again, Mr. Giorgio's correct, that, you know, in terms of total real estate of Chatham and Harwich, the reality of the distribution of the families that are on that bus, it's a, it's a smaller area that the, you know, that the bus is going through so that, you know, so that we are able to go and get the students there and back. And these are, and I don't disagree with, you know, with the parents, you know, too. It's one of those that you want to, you know, you want to go and accommodate, and we also have to keep in mind that the students that were obliged to go and provide the transportation for are three and four years old, and how long do we want them to be on the buses?
So, follow up. So, this woman who was speaking a moment ago, her child is one of the participants in the program.
He's the only one in the afternoon. He literally rides that bus alone. But can I interject you a fast, because I do know from speaking to all the other parents, and I'll say as a parent, the peer parents have been beyond welcoming to me as an IEP parent because you hate to say it, but you are technically in two different groups, depending on why your child is on an IEP program. There's various reasons. But I know for a fact that there are parents that are willing to meet at friends' houses, go to a different bus stop, if they can find a bus stop that would be deemed closer and easier, people that are willing to, myself, currently the bus, it's fabulous. I own a pretty large business. Technically, my office is in my house, but I visit job sites, et cetera. I'm out on the road. The bus pulls in my driveway. I have a big circular driveway. It's like a big cul-de-sac. They pull in, they drop them off, literally at my front doorstep. Like, dream. I've even said, "I'll go down to the end of the road" where the morning bus and afternoon bus picks up my six-year-old daughter and drops her off. You don't have to pull in my driveway. Yeah, it's quite the added bonus, but I'd have to say, very vast majority of the parents involved in this incident are willing to make adjustments, whether they, I know two parents that are willing to go to Jill's house. Kathleen, I know is willing to go to 39. I'm willing to go to Route 39. I've heard from two other parents that they would be willing to even change their bus stop if that meant like further down the road, and they had to like, instead of walking to the end of their driveway, they'd go to another location. So, as far as the times, I feel like the parents are more than willing to crunch down what is supposedly the time problem. So, I feel like if we're all willing to kind of work with what supposedly the issue is, technically, the issue shouldn't really be an issue. Am I kind of correct in saying that?
I think if we can accommodate all the families, I, on my end, I'd have no qualms with that.
Yeah, I mean, like honestly, I haven't heard, not even one parent say, "Oh, I'm not making a change. Oh, I'm not going to the end of the road," or. Everyone is more than willing to kind of pitch in. We seem to have a really great group of kids, like I said, that's non-IEP and IEP, that interact all the time, in and outside of school. So, we, all us parents have become pretty friendly, and I, hands down, have not heard one parent say, "I'm not willing to make this work," somehow. So, I just wanted to throw that out there.
Sharon?
Just to clarify for myself.
Yes.
I've been vaguely aware of the issue for a couple of weeks.
Sure.
And my answers would probably hurt for my superintendent, so bear with me. The integrated program that we launched a year or two or three ago?
Well, it's been a couple of years, because this is my third year.
And the original program outline, it included the youngsters on IEPs to be given a ride to and from the site.
Correct.
And the peer portion of that were made up by a list of youngsters who wanted to join, that would be regular ed kids that would join them in the class, which started in the classroom. Without, without any exceptions of, busing wasn't included?
For Harwich. Chatham, everybody gets it.
Okay, so originally in Harwich, the regular ed parents said, "Hey, great program. I'll drive. I'll find a way to get them there." Okay. It's kind of like, fair is fair, but also no good deed goes unpunished.
No, there was no cost when it was started in Harwich. There was no cost.
And I'm aware of the extra cost. Two years ago, I was on the board that we voted that whatever ended up paying $150.
$150.
Which is probably fair is fair, and competitively compared to private places, probably is a decent, very good experience. So, the issue is either the price of a bus to accommodate everybody above and beyond the so-called legal guidelines that were existing, and that'd be an interesting price, and are, do we have some space that I just heard that Katie, our business manager, and the superintendent meet with as many of you folks, because, one, and I'm saying part of this for my own understanding, and also for those who aren't here on TV to know that the system created this program that was to match youngsters with two different needs.
Correct.
Originally, the pay was for the youngsters on IEPs to get, provide a free bus home. No problem with the fellow said, the busing, learning starts at the bus, good and bad learning, but that's something that, once this thing was started, and some accommodations in Chatham, because there was a shortness of ride, or the, there were fewer kids, that accommodations made, which creates what we're now experiencing. The youngsters in Harwich, the regular ed kids, find their way to the program and then come home via their parents. So, A, I kind of understand it. Two, I would suggest that if there's a way to clear this up without the system getting another $10,000, $15,000, I don't know the number, for a second bus for Harwich, when in fact, we're really cutting right away to try to make a micro change.
Well, Harwich actually has two buses.
Well, I didn't mean two. In other words, I don't wanna get into the route. I'd suggest that a certain group get together and see if we can work it out that, A, all the program consists of committed, all the extras IEPs, they get it regardless. If there's a way to accommodate everybody else, then maybe it's worth a second meet.
And I would like to point out that I do know that there are families that because this bus is not being provided for peers this year, it has forced some financial difficulties on parents because they're missing out on the ability to see other clients, or be at a particular meeting, or work that particular job that they were working before because the bus is no longer a factor.
Sure. So, at what point a bus was provided?
Last year, a bus was provided.
Right, and then, and that was, that was out of the goodness of the system, and it was able to be done. Pullback created something that we all got used to having.
And I do know for a fact that the bus that my son rides, last year, there was a family that was very far out, and I know for a fact, they were told, "Unfortunately, you are too far out." And it would put us over the time. So, it's kind of weird how last year, someone was told, "I'm so sorry, you're too far out." They were very understanding because they knew that they lived way on the outskirts. But then this year, supposedly, a child can't be told no, but they have been in the past, and no one has even approached any of us parents to say, "Would you be willing to work with us?" It was, we were just shut down from the very beginning. And I say "we" because I consider the peer parents my friends, so.
Sure. It's unfortunate that the regular ed youngsters who were invited to the program, what was a gratuity has morphed into an expectation.
Correct.
And so how do we unravel this without spending more money for busing than one could argue that we don't have?
Correct.
But if we're paying the same amount as Chatham parents, and we're getting a different benefit, that's where, and again, whatever legal sources you've looked for, but.
That hurts. I understand. I wouldn't buy into the idea of, because of that, the three to seven to nine regular ed kids in Chatham go find yourself rides. I mean, that's probably done because there's availability, so then hopefully a better way to solve it. That's like spitting your nose to, but, my opinion.
So, if us parents are willing to meet and make a way to make it happen?
We have a member that wants to make a comment, so.
That'd be good now. My question was, is there room on the two buses for all of the students
Oh, by far.
who want to ride the bus?
Yes, and extra room.
So. So, there's plenty, it was not a need that there's some families that can't fit on the bus. It's all the integrated and the peer models would fit. The ones that would want to ride the bus, not necessarily every student, but the ones who actually use it. But like, for example, I'm offering a bus stop for my child. We don't use the bus, so.
The condition when we regionalized was that if space was available and the time constraints were not gonna be stressed, that we would offer it to the model peers. Last year, because of the population we had, given the addresses to the bus company, they indicated, as you pointed out, that a number of families could be accommodated, and a couple of parents did kind of meet in the same place to facilitate that, but there were a few cases where that was not feasible. This year, again, given the addresses and the number of students we have, recognizing that the four-year-olds last year now in kindergarten, and there's this new group of three-year-olds, the demographics is a little different. Give the bus company the numbers and the names and the addresses, and the recommendation is, we can't do it all. And the decision was, if we can't provide it for everybody, it's not really favorable. Pick and choose. That's where it ended.
Right, but you weren't picking and choosing because you're from Chatham.
It sounds like it would be realistic to sit down with the parents and the bus company and the administration to kind of hash out, "Well, we don't want the ridership time to exceed X minutes. Would we be willing to," and it sounds like they were willing to, "meet in different locations" to kind of cluster the stops, and it sounds like a conversation could be had.
And that's part of what the big prob, well, not like problem, but that was bothering us as parents.
This is the school committee's force to have a conversation within us, so.
I was just gonna say that. We were trying to do that. That's what we were trying to do, but we were shut down.
If there's a question, we'll direct it to you.
Okay.
Sharon?
So, there are a couple of things, and my question for you, Scott, is, our preschool program itself is only mandated federally by the state to be for the students that have special needs. Is that correct?
Yes, in terms of, in terms of the free program.
Yes. Oh, in terms of the free program. Are we mandated to have an integrated preschool?
So, you ideally wanna develop programs that are, you know, that are integrated for, you know, all of the reasons that Mr. Craig brought up.
Right. But we, but what I'm asking is, are we mandated to do it integrated? Are we doing that because it's the most effective?
I will defer to my elementary man.
I would, if I was to be allowed to make a vote, would vote for an integrated program any day.
Oh, yes.
But it's not required.
For all the benefits that have been stated.
Yeah.
We're to provide the services to the children that have been found to need services, and the model we've, that's been in Harwich and in many school systems, is an integrated program. And it's balanced. In other words, if a new child moves in that requires services, then we can open up another slot to a model peer to balance that out.
I'm familiar with integrated programs in the both towns, and they are fabulous, really fabulous. They wouldn't be the quality of education for the kids that have speech problems, whatever problems, if they didn't have the models, so that's wonderful. And I'm not, I'm kind of wondering if maybe we shouldn't look at it like, I never actually thought about it before, but after, when, after you spoke, I thought about that. Maybe the program. Maybe the program is the whole program instead of like the time they enter the classroom. But another issue is that when we regionalized, we knew that this would, not this particular thing, but we knew we'd have some things that we needed to work out. But it's my hope and expectation that we will work out things to be, um, the same in both places. Um, if they're wanted in both places and that they would be, um, that we wouldn't go to the worst-case scenario, like eliminating the bus in Chatham because of, that makes it equitable. So, um, I think we have a very fabulous opportunity with this group of parents that they're actually talking about working as a community. And I don't hear that very often. So I would really, really encourage that we can figure something out with your help.
Karen.
Uh, I would just say I agree with Nancy and Sharon that I think, um, if we're going to provide busing for the model peers in Chatham, I think we should make every effort to do the same thing in Harwich and take the best of for each school instead of the not best of. And use that as a practice for both schools. Um, it's, it was very interesting to hear from Mr. Craig when he said that the integrated experience starts with the bus. And that was a really good point. Um, I, as Sharon was saying, I had not thought about that before. But I think that's pretty important. Um, this is, it's a big social time for the kids. I know for my son it is. Um, and as Ms. Morris was saying, the, uh, you know, during class, they don't have much time to interact. So that's a really good opportunity for them. I think we should make every effort, especially since the parents that we've heard from and whatever other parents there are, it seems, are willing to try and work out something so that it can work. I think the least that we can do is listen to them and try and make it work so that the kids that, whose parents want to take advantage of this can. And it sounds like not all of the twenty or so that could ride the bus are even interested. We're talking small group to fit.
Karen.
It would interest me to know if other towns, specifically in the Cape, have integrated programs for their preschool youngsters. And the larger towns, Dennis Shammith Municipal specifically, they must have the same difficulty. In that if they have a bus that's dedicated for the specialized youngsters and then some regular A youngsters included in the program are invited on, and then the next year geography shifts, it could be an ongoing every year difficulty to try to accommodate in a gracious way. Even though I agree with the three women here that, um, I, you know, technically I would imagine the federal government, the state is paying money for the program to start in a classroom, not on the buses. Although a bus ride to many would be, is a wonderful thing, and I know there are some, but you just can't all of a sudden roll that into the program and say, now that, that's part of, that's part of the learning experience and we'll find money to make that all happen. But I would, I would like to know if there are other towns that have ran into this problem because it could easily, once you, once you start to be gracious and say, hey, let the regular A kids, if they're on the same street or neighborhood, jump on board because it's a lot easier. And then all of a sudden, we create, a good thing is creating a problem. Uh, how do they resolve it? And maybe they don't have an integrated program.
Right.
Having trouble following where we're leaving this off.
I think, I think we can have Sam work with Gretchen, who deals with Bus Dispatch on creating hubs. You know, which I, I think, you know, if he can work with the families to create some hubs that can keep the times, the times down.
Okay. So the concept would be that since there are, since there are families that are willing to change where they catch the bus to make where they catch the bus closer to the route that we're already taking, that's the kind of solution we're talking about, right? It sounds good to me.
Good luck.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
I think, one last thing, an underlying kind of...
Can you go, Sharon?
Um, thanks again. Um, I think an underlying issue here too, that I think, not just for this topic, but any possible topic in the future is, is that, you know, we are a unified district. And what's good for one town is good for another town. And I think that we really have to watch the slippery slope of, if you give a benefit to one town and not the other, or one school in this town but not the other, that creates a division. And if we're all to be under one district here, you cannot do that. Because that creates the chatter and then that creates the whole, oh, well, they're getting it, what, why not us? You know, or, you know, or we're getting it, I put my nose down to them, or whatever it is. I just think that in the future, no matter what the program or the, or the activity or any sort of benefit that we could add to our educational system, it has to be balanced and equal for each town. It's very important, I think, if we're going to be unified as one district, that there is no Chatham, there is no Harwich. There's, there's just Montemoi and everybody meets in the middle so we can all just grow together.
I just felt, sorry about that. I have to take the opportunity for the teachers' sake. Um, we've had conversations over the years because when we started looking at regionalization, one of the aspects of Chatham being different than Harwich and how do we make it together was recognizing that every child was transporting the preschool program to the Chatham Elementary School in home, which posed a number of questions about the benefits and the values. Clearly a benefit for a parent, but from the teacher's perspective, a disadvantage. Because the homeschool connection starts with the conversations when the child gets dropped off or picked up, which many times, the children that just ride the bus, it's an additional effort both on the parent's part and on the school's part to have that communication. So in one sense, our teachers, when I say ours, the Harwich teachers, were pleased in as much as they were upset that they couldn't offer their model peers a ride on the bus because of all the good reasons that you mentioned, the integration component. It's almost like if we could have the best of both worlds. It was interesting, a number of parents that did get the transportation last year realized that they missed that connection and end up notifying the bus driver that, no, I'm going to be picking them up from school. And even this year, the conversation was, I wouldn't mind it for the ride home or the ride to, but not necessarily for both rides. Um, then it becomes a logistical challenge as to how to equate the runs so that you've got X number of riders on the morning but not in the afternoon. You've got a mill run that has only an hour to work with, so that limits it. And then you have to build a contingent plan in the event that someone moves in here in town. Do we then say we have to reduce people? If we have shared bus stops, that may not be an issue because we have the numbers and the seats on the bus. But if we did create extra stops, and that's where the biggest concern was, that you would then say, oh, I'm sorry, you got it for three months, but now someone's moved in, now you have to leave because we don't have time. So we will, I'll, I'll work with the bus company, I've worked with the parents, and they know where I stand. We want both. So just want to share that.
After he's completed, you want to send out an email blast to the committee to see where we're standing? Okay. Next on the agenda is Dollars for Scholars.
Good evening. My name's Pat Long, and I'm a board member on the Montemoi Dollars for Scholars. Um, I'm accompanied by our co-presidents, Jean Young, Margaret Martin. And we also have a newer board member, Tony London, sitting here at the desk. Um, our purpose tonight is to find a way to collaborate and blend past practices with a new Montemoi tradition. So I'd like to just pass out those brochures. Just to give a little background on exactly what we do. In nineteen sixty-four, a group of parents in Chatham got together and noticed that a lot of kids couldn't go to college for various reasons, money being first and foremost. So they formed a group who raised monies and made awards to kids who were worthy of such awards. In nineteen sixty-six, they joined the National Scholarship Foundation, Scholarship America, and found more innovative ways on how to raise money. Over the last fifty-one years, we've given approximately one point six million dollars in scholarships to graduating seniors and continuing ed students. So it's a very important process for our graduating seniors and for those who are struggling to continue through college. I have a son that just graduated, and I've got another in school in his second year up at UNH. And it's a challenge to make those payments on a quarterly basis. One of the ways that we get the kids knowledgeable about the financial aspect of continuing ed is by involving them in the program. It's not something that the parents do for their children, we're trying to involve them. So we've always, for the last fifty, fifty years, we've had a scholarship drive. Our seniors organize a drive which uses all kids, grades nine through twelve, so that we get kids familiar with the program, familiar with, yes, there are large costs to continuing education. And they go door to door through Chatham, they used to go through Chatham, door to door. We would advertise for them, we would give them promotional materials, we would give them envelopes. And the town folks knew they were coming and they would donate. The kids would raise probably five thousand to six thousand dollars historically. Not a lot, but it gave them skin in the game so that when they got the award, they knew they earned it. Um, the past program, high school students, eighteen-year-olds, would drive the younger kids and they'd be assigned to certain section of town. And they would go out and come back with the monies, excuse me. And it was a very, um, friendly, fun. Kids got to interact with the townsfolk. I remember watching a Patriots game and waiting for the kids to come to the door. And you'd have a group of four or five kids come up to the door, all bubbly, asking for money. First thing, write out the check because you're so excited to see kids happy, thinking about their future at college. Last year, in two thousand fourteen and fifteen, we were Chatham Dollars for Scholars. We made a concerted effort because we wanted to encompass and embrace the regionalization. So we made a concerted effort to change our name, go through the legalities. We are now Montemoi Dollars for Scholars. We invited several Harwich folks onto the board, and they came on and brought a huge energy. It's a very positive experience. Unfortunately, when we went to start our drive for October, we were informed there was a no door-to-door policy. So the drive has not been able to take place this year. So we approached Mr. Carpenter, who thank you for facilitating our presence here tonight, Mr. Barkhead and Mr. Gifford. And we sat down and we were trying to figure out ways of compromising. So we came up with one thought that if parents drove the students to the geographic area and the kids could go out in groups to the houses, perhaps that's a much safer, um, a much safer way to proceed. So we're asking for ideas, we're asking for ways to keep this tradition going because it is a way that the students get to interact with the townsfolk. Um, it's a way for them to earn their own college money. Every dollar that they earn that particular day goes to graduating seniors. All Montemoi school, or, all Montemoi school kids are eligible, no matter what town, where they come from, for some of the scholarships. I encourage you to go out to the website that's on the brochure. Your students are able to apply for local, regional, even national scholarships. We're looking to encourage all of the scholarship groups to join under this because it makes it much easier for the kids to find scholarships. And when you're looking at a sixty thousand dollar per year bill, every scholarship counts. Are there any questions?
Um, I'm not sure, you said that your proposal for this year, or for the next time, whenever that is, would be that parents would be more involved and they work in the paths of Chatham? Could you be more specific? Are you talking about parents just dropping the students off in the geographical area and then picking them up, or traveling with them throughout the area?
I'm, I'm an insurance agent, so I get liability issue. I thoroughly get that. But at the same time, I would like to see the kids be able to stretch their wings a little bit. My compromise was to have the parent drive them to the area, but let the kids go out on their own in groups. They can wait in the area if that's what's decided, so that they can pick that group up and bring them back to the meeting place, which would most likely be here at the high school where we collect and gather the money. And there's also an award for those that bring back the most. Any student who participates in the program also is pretty much guaranteed one of the scholarships at graduation. So we're looking for ways to not stifle the kids because they're eighteen. They're going to be going to cities and different countries. These scholarships apply to technical, they apply to volunteer organizations. If a child wants to go to Peace Corps for a year, these scholarships can assist them in that process. Um, if they want to go to become a plumber, these scholarships can assist those. So it's not just college degrees. And any thoughts that don't stifle the kids but help the liability issue, we'd welcome.
Karen.
Well, I'm hugely supportive of this, having been in the school when this was developed in, in Chatham. And I don't remember any incidents, any problem. I don't see Chatham as one that's safer. I think it's just the same in safety as Harwich. Harwich is larger, but we did have some information on what the difference in largeness, and it's not that different. Um, personally, as a parent of somebody who's likely a fifteen-year-old, go to Paraguay for AFS, and I couldn't speak with her here. You know, I think we, I do our kids a very big disservice if we're worried about something that's small. But on the other hand, as far as liability goes, Chatham has done this. And I don't know what the, um, what the, what they're told as far as rules and deportment and all that. But I'm wondering if something could be written down for the kids, maybe they have to sign this thing. The thing I can think of the most is not to enter a house, to stay on the steps. I mean, with four or five kids, it sounds real safe. But if we're really concerned about safety, that would be the only thing I think of.
Absolutely. We meet with the kids before they go out. We meet here at the school, guidance facilities, staff meeting. We meet with the class officers. We have rules that we go over during those meetings, but we also write the rules down, and it goes with each and every child. They're definitely told, no child goes along, you will always remain in your group. Um, we have cell phone communication, so if there are any questions, they get lost, whatever. We've got self, nobody gets lost with cell phones these days.
Karen.
Chair, I would imagine the Chatham program is prior to the kids going out, there's some type of notice to the homes, a Chronicle or newspaper or flyers from school?
Absolutely. There was a very large article in early October, I believe, talking about this program. We put signs up everywhere that police departments are aware of it. We go to great lengths to let folks know, kid's going to be out, so that those that may get nervous if they see kids in groups won't. And it's always a Sunday afternoon, one to four, we try and catch long weekends when not just primary residents are here.
That was my next question, so that's funny. Another is, it's not, it's not October, it's dark at quarter to five, the kids are out there. So it's one to four, and they go as a group of two kids or three or four? Correct?
Right.
So who has the no door-to-door policy?
The, there's, the school committee has, on the fundraising form, a line at the bottom that says that door-to-door solicitation needs to be approved by the school committee.
So we don't necessarily have a policy that says there's no door-to-door, just as it has to be approved by the committee?
I would just add that, as I said last week, I am hugely in favor of this. I think it's a great program. I love that the kids are invested in it. I, as an advocate for improved community relations, I think it's fabulous that way that they're getting kids out in front of community members. And I personally, I'm probably too lenient with my kids, I guess, because I do not really see the safety issue with it. Or they're high school students.
I just wanted to add that I support this, the door-to-door fundraising for Dollars for Scholars, it's a great program.
Great, and you should see the excitement on the kids' faces as they're getting ready to go out, getting ready to come back. It's, it's a lot of fun, and I encourage anybody to come down and see it if you have questions.
Sure.
So is there something we could go around tonight so they could do it, so the senior class will be able to have the scholarship money?
Can Francis's come in? I have some questions first.
Okay.
There's been some great ideas presented here and acknowledgement by you of certain things that you do already and are willing to do in the future. Could, could we get that, could you give, could you create some kind of document that explains how exactly it's going to work? And you said that you have the students, or, the students are told exactly what the rules of the program are. Do they have to sign the acknowledgement that they've read those rules? Or is there anything that, I don't want to make it, I don't want to make it overly formal, but if we could get, if we could get even an outline of exactly the way you plan to do it, so that for our records, we would have voted for something when we knew what we were voting for?
Absolutely. It's already drawn up, we just need to change that parents would take the students in the car versus students taking the students. Other than that, it's all drawn up, and I can send it over to you tomorrow morning.
I would rather see it before I vote for it myself.
Absolutely.
And I think the caveat of parents driving, I think, is that, that's the one thing that makes it very consistent, how we, as a school, we wouldn't have students taking other students on field trip, because it opens us and it would open the scholarship to liability, which you wouldn't want.
I think that based on our conversation last week, that was one of the hesitations, was the fact that the students would be driving themselves.
Right.
So I think that, that was a crux of a lot of the conversation, was if parents drove around, that would make everybody a little bit more, I just kind of, we were discussing about how, what they would do. In my mind, thinking if I drove several years from now, I'm not volunteering now, that I would drop them off in the neighborhood, and depending on the neighborhood, if I'm picturing my neighborhood, I'd be like, all right, I'll sit in the side of the road and let them wander around there, and, you know, drive around and check off on them, but, you know, just to kind of, depending on what the neighborhoods are, I think is a huge difference as to what the parents would do with their charges that they're driving around. So to have, you know, it's not necessarily the parents need to sit there and watch them and work behind them at every household, because I think that's also, it's hindering them, and not letting them spread their wings, because they need to take it a little amongst themselves, and that's what they're going to do, so.
You need to let the kids be there inzuber themselves, and if they know somebody's watching them, so you, maybe they've got a little bit of rope, but, because they are inzuber, it's, it's a very pleasant sight to the whole.
It's a lot of fun.
It is.
Chair.
I appreciate you mentioning the cell phones, because that's something that makes me feel so much safer now than years ago. So I'm understanding that we put this on the agenda for next time when we have that paper.
Great, we appreciate your listening, and it's a great program, and let me tell you, the scholarship money does help tremendously, so. And please know, anybody watching there is continuing ed scholarship for second, third, fourth year students, so think about it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is the subcommittee reports. This is the second review of the revised student activity policy. Does anybody have any comments or suggestions to this policy?
Good job. It's the activity fund policy.
Right, yes. It being our second reading, the next reading we will load on the approval of. Are there any other subcommittee reports?
The sub, the subcommittee communications. The communications subcommittee, we're having an issue communicating. We met almost two weeks ago, and we started to try to get a grapple on where we actually would like to go with some communications from the school committee, and where we would like to head in terms of some ideas to bring to the school committee to present as some objectives for communication, and also kind of tie in to that with our school committee goals, to try to reach out. When we meet again for our workshop to create our school committee goals, that could be a basis for that conversation. So we have a follow-up meeting this Friday as well, so. Hope to have some more information and some more fine-tuned thoughts by then.
So we can have these at our goals meeting on the talk.
Yeah, we want to bring those with the mentor meeting, because it's kind of like having done some of the work beforehand, I think, I think we'll have a lot.
We hope the goals meeting along a little faster.
Yeah, moving along.
Speed, how about speed?
Mr. Chair, just an update on the subcommittee for the superintendent's evaluation. Right at this meeting, if I could meet with the subcommittee and we can arrange for a date, hopefully next week's meeting with the superintendent to review his material regarding previous year's achievement of goals. In the meantime, everyone else who received the materials, the backup, as well as the one back-to-back page that you submit to the chair, you, you are able to begin to that process now, with the hopes that within the next four weeks, we can have it completed.
Any other comments? Move on to superintendent's report.
In terms of the strategic plan and getting input on student improvement, I met on the 20th with parents in the morning at the Chatham Elementary School PTO meeting. It was a, it was a short but productive, productive conversation. The following evening, I was spared from participating at the Harlem Wizards game, instead was at the Chatham Rotary, Sharon joined me, and it was, it was a, I think a really nice conversation with, with the group. I have one of the Rotarians coming into my office tomorrow to follow up from, from conversations that, that happened that evening. I think you have copies of the feedback that we've gotten so far. We also have 139 people so far have gone on and given feedback, or, or have gone on to the survey. A, a small portion of them, while they go on to the survey, it logs them as going on, but when you get to the, you know, when you get to the end, they, you know, they indicate whether they're a student or a parent or a community member, and then, you know, don't answer, you know, don't provide any feedback, so there's, yeah, so there's a couple blanks in the, in that. We'll be putting the, you know, the survey out, I'll be working with, with Alan Pollack to hopefully have that, have the link published, so that we can have the greater community go and write that. But so far, the, the feedback that people have provided on the online surveys and other eight pages of single-spaced feedback that's come in, in the, in the upcoming weeks, I want to work with both Mark and Bill to get feedback from our middle school and high school students. That's the one piece that we've lacked, you know, the student input, and I think that, that just as we have, you know, Lane and other students come and present here, we want to get that. I'll be doing another tour through the schools to spend time with the staff, but I know the first time that we went through, there were links to a number of staff that could make it at various times, so just trying to, to encourage them. And we'll schedule for mid-November, another parent evening, parent forum. So those dates I'll share with you as they get set up. In terms of the high school building project, we had some, some big successes. If we, if we look up, the lights in the art room above us now shut off. So the, the, ever since the flood, the lighting controller for this portion of the building has not functioned. Those lights have been programmed, including the lights in the TV studio. So we're, you know, we are several days away from having that be, you know, a fully functional space, and, and hopefully in the upcoming weeks, we can have people trained and start just helping them not have to drag out cameras, but, you know, but prop a speed up on a table back there and start panning and zooming in on the cameras that have been awaiting us here in the corners of the, of the library. In terms of the concession stand, we had a building committee meeting this past, this past week, and there have been discussions at the building committee meeting on how can we facilitate the concession stand moving forward and getting that, that part of the project gaining some, getting some speed. I think one of the fundamental challenges that we've had is, is we have what I would call a pencil sketch of what the concession stand should look like in terms of a, a floor, you know, sort of a floor layout, and, and a, you know, sort of a quick CAD drawing on what the, you know, what the face of the building would look like. But that pencil sketch really isn't enough for, you know, for a crew of volunteers to say, okay, you know, you know, what am I supposed to cut this, you know, this stud to, how long? And, yeah, so I have asked the, the architects at the building committee meeting to, to give us a, a, a cost on what would it take for them to, to develop that pencil sketch all the way out, so that it's a stamped drawing which protects, gives the district some protection that, that, you know, that when we build this as designed, it's going to stand up and be safe and secure, but also to, to be able to use that, that drawing to generate a lumber list. And, and again, kind of, at least the proposal I've been floating out there, if we think of this in the, the, you know, vein of, you know, engaging the community, you know, hopefully we can reach out to a nearby lumberyard and look at it almost like the concession stand bridal registry, and have the Russell family kick in two toilets, and the Carpenter family kick in, you know, two-by-fours, you know, all the two-by-fours, but, you know, but what do we tangibly need to purchase to go have this building get, get put up? But, but we, we really need to get from that, move beyond a pencil sketch. And so, so we hope to get, get by our next meeting some, you know, some feedback from the architect on what that expense would be for the building project.
What would the possibility of having one of the very knowledgeable building committee members who might be architects to pencil sketch that more solidly for free?
I, I, I didn't hear anyone standing up saying I'd like to do it and stamp the drawing for free.
That's too bad.
Yeah, I was going to ask the same question. I mean, we also have parents who are architects in the district, and I'm wondering if that, that time couldn't be donated.
Put an all call out to anybody who might be interested, who may not be on the building committee. Free's good.
Chair.
Well, I have something similar on that. I think that whatever we do, if we can keep it as local as possible, and free, free might be available, but if it's not available, I think we'd probably get more buy-in and cost, and we've got a lot of expertise here. Not that the people that have done the building have done a fabulous job.
But we also have to emphasize that, that free is, is tremendously important, because if we were to go pay, then we bid, and there's public procurement laws that, that are, that are part of this. It's, it, it also gets, you know, gets convoluted in that a, a company, you know, a, a, a company or even an architect, they can donate their time, but they can't donate others' time, so, you know, so, you know, the construction firm of Milton Construction Firm were to go and say, you know, send five laborers over, it, it then gets, it, it, it becomes a challenge with where we have to be under, under the statute for the project, which is one of the things our lawyer was barely trying to share. So the lawyer has sent out, or sent back to us a, a volunteer worker sort of form that you'd sign off, not unlike if you were going to work on a Habitat for Humanity bill when you were, you know, volunteering, you know, volunteering your time. So we have that piece in place. We really need to start moving beyond and, and get the, get the drawing ready to go. And, and then, I, every time it rains like this, I just think of Alan Thompson and the windows. I, I feel like I should run around and make sure that, that, you know, that there's no windows leaking in the entire facility. I also want the building committee members who, you know, and, you know, there's, over the, over the last, you know, over the last year, there's been great discussion on, on the windows, which, you know, mother nature keeps testing, and, and at least lately, they've, there's no drips, and, and so knock on wood that continues. I, I think Deb had mentioned, you know, one of the, one of the things that, that happens when it comes to, to data is that, that her, her group was helping the district facilitate the park testing, and she, she had indicated that in the upcoming weeks here, by mid-November, the state's going to make a decision on which way they're going to go. I suspect the commissioner sort of foreshadowing where he sees the tea leaves may go out, thanks in the newspapers all over where we go, that, that was indicating that, that we've learned a lot from Park, and that maybe what, you know, the boat might go towards Park, or it might go another direction, but if it goes another direction, that maybe what it should look like is M-PAS 2.0 that, that takes the lessons learned from Park. So, you know, so it's entirely possible that what we do see is a, is a state, is that Massachusetts will continue to own the, the assessment, but, but to learn, you know, that, I think one of what they've learned is that, that there's, there's a benefit on having it be a computerized assessment. So, so for our own district, even if it doesn't go towards Park, it's definitely been a... So for our own district, even if it doesn't go towards Park, it's definitely been a good learning for us on what it's needed to prepare students to take online assessments, which really is helping them prepare for assessments that they are going to face in their futures. And I know that some of us, like we face, we have to get recertified for different aspects in our jobs these days. And last thing I just wanted to raise in terms of shameless emails that you'll see going out to the parent community. We had wanted to see and had budgeted for a, some contracted sort of part-time web support to kind of get the, get content up there onto the website and start seeing that take off. And we have put it on School Spring where we put our ads, and it's been on the employment page for a good two, three weeks. And we have put it in the KIPod Times, and we have precisely nobody applying. What I would like to do, which will be a first for me, is putting something out to our parents because I know that there are parents like Karen and others that have some great facility with the technology. And I think the right person for the job may be somebody who's in our parent community that has experiences. And even if it's, even if it is, I'd say, somebody who can be great at developing content and putting out content. I know that we can have Deb work with them in a matter of a couple hours, teach them the software piece of this that would be necessary to help us sort of start taking it in any direction. We have somebody who is great on the website side of it, can help us take it in other directions. So you'll see a shameless plug coming out this week from me to encourage somebody out there who may be connected. And I know that I got an email from a parent, another place that you might go, post online for KIPod that might get somebody with that sort of technical expertise.
You could put it on the CCYP website, you could put it on Dice.com or other places you could put it, that you'd probably get some responses. No other places I would look. I used to go on Dice quite a bit for tech positions.
If you want to shoot down the links, I think the first one might have been the one thing that a parent had sent me, not familiar with Dice.
I'm confused about this because I thought that, I saw on Facebook that somebody was already hired for this, and I didn't see it on our website, but maybe in mine, because there are a couple of different ones. These things all get posted on the websites, the school websites?
It's on the website, yes.
This one I did at this, I saw this.
There may be some of the notes.
So for clarity, by union contract, any position that we have must be posted or yours truly and my team agree by the union. And we have to post for a contractually specified number of days. Our contracts require that we interview in-house candidates if they apply. And you will oftentimes, maybe hear that a position has been filled or, and you'll say, "Okay, but I don't see it on the web." Well, what happens is if Sam is advertising for, say, kindergarten teacher, you know, once we start the interview process, the ad oftentimes is coming down because the application period's been closed. You're not seeing it up there. But they go through the interview process, it's been hired, every position has been posted, it has to be posted.
It's just helpful to hear when these happen. For me, a while back, several months ago, I said, could we have, I think it was last spring or summer, we hadn't finished hiring everybody. And I said, I would love to have sort of like a flow chart or like high school, and then all the people, the teachers, all aides. So I kind of, you know, those people are at least by name, you know, I would love to have their pictures next to them.
I thought I gave you the full list of the staff from the district.
It wasn't up to date at that time. So when it gets up, if...
It was up to date for that moment.
Yes, it was. Yes, it was. So, but I would update mine if, when we hired some people, we could know about it, and if it was a transfer, because I understand what you're saying, but for our transfers from the firm, that's great.
Question, when you say has to be posted, what does that specifically mean? Has to be posted on the website, has to be posted on School Spring and the website, has to be posted in the paper? What does that mean, has to be posted? Just asking for clarification.
It needs, you can by contract internally post something, so which would need to be posted within, you know, within each student building on a bulletin board. We generally post and use the website and our personnel manager puts, anytime there's a position that's open, she sends an email out to all staff letting them know. So there's the weekly email that says, here's a opening. And it could be for a coaching position, it could be for a teaching position, a teaching assistant position, a public position.
So when you say it's generally posted on the website, it's always posted on the website?
I...
Sorry, I'm just asking for some...
I believe she always posts onto the website in addition to sending out the email.
Okay. Can I ask another question about the strategic plan? You were giving us an update on the strategic plan. Thank you for the information that you provided here, it's great. I read actually almost all of it this afternoon. You have feedback from the parent survey in spring of 2015, and before that you had Survey Monkey participation to date. I think you mentioned there was about eight pages of comments. Could we get those? I'd love to read.
Yeah, I just...
I'm happy to read the pages.
I just haven't, I haven't gone and taken the comments and tried to convert them into what would be a public document.
Well, I mean, it doesn't have to be pretty. I'm happy to just look at them as they are unless there's some sort of issue with that. I would be interested.
So Sarah, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's still up there.
That was, sorry.
I just also wanted to thank you for the data.
And I would like to thank Tony and the rest of my crew, because they go through everything before we put it together. And that's a lot. And this next installment, once we have the what's online, we want to go take that and have it be a good public document as well.
I love what we've gotten, and I particularly love that each, like we went out to, you know, like some meetings I've been to, it looked like everyone, not by name, but by each comment looks like it's there.
Every thing that somebody has said, I've tried to play...
I love that. I love that because...
That's the best is I can read my own writing.
Yeah, I've got notes too, but that's a challenge, I understand. But that's so helpful to do that.
And it's not a verbatim transcript. I think if you were at any of these, I try to capture the spirit of the discussion. And I think there was one that, I don't know if you were at it, the parent meeting that's here in the library. No, Terry, you were here, Terry, Son was there.
Yes.
And there was...
My son was there. I was out trying to get a good price on toilets. It's going to be tight.
You know, so I think in that, I summarized a theme, the bulk of that conversation was really around what could we as a school district and school community do to engage parents and engage families? You know, so it was, it was a sort of a thematic thing that I tried to encapsulate in that it's not a verbatim transcript by any sense.
And I think, you know, to add, I'm going to try to do this just as fast as I can. After that meeting, not something that was held in the meeting, but after the meeting, there were some people hanging around, and some people were offended, not by anything you said, but...
I'm sure I've offended a few people too.
No, no, it wasn't nothing like that. But what's happened is, we had, we mentioned it in that meeting, that there's a culture of some people that have moved in and some people that live here that have a certain expectation for academic excellence and whatever. And some of the people that have moved in here recently don't realize that we had excellent schools before. And so they talk in ways that we're just taking this, you know, out in the sticks place and making it something that's worthy of somebody moving here from the Boston suburbs. And so people that have lived here for a number of years, you know, are offended by that. And I don't think anyone's intentionally doing that. I think it's just they don't realize that culture. So, you know, in this regionalization process, there's all these different things that are not really about regionalization coming into this. So it's good to know.
There were also, as you read through the comments, you know, there are, you know, there were just natural tensions that, you know, the meeting at the Chadon Rotary that Cher and I were at last week. I absolutely adore this comment that one of the grandmothers made, and she raises how she feels it's a loss, and it's not so much a loss of what's happened since regionalization with Monroe, but it's a loss of what's happened societally that we've locked our schools. And, you know, that you've got buzzers, that you've got buzzers at the doors, and she remembers a time when you could just walk in and just walk into the public school and walk down to the classroom and see the teacher without, you know, buzzing in and signing in and the formality that's happened. Then a few minutes later, somebody else was raising, you know, just wanting me to assure him that, you know, we were prepared for active shooters. And, you know, and you have that, you have that tension where they're both very valid, and you want to honor and acknowledge both. And it's like my want is to have our schools look much more like what the grandmother, you know, hopes, at least you want to have that feel on the culture of school.
And I think that when people speak up like that, despite, you know, having been a counselor in schools and realizing the infrequent, but the real need for some of that security, that there may be times we can work that in, not like that every day bringing the kids or picking them up, but there may be times that we can do something like that. So it's wonderful to see that.
And while I've been sitting here this evening, I have also received a manifesto on the strategic plan from history teacher Matt Brown. So that may take the, you know, we may need to put this in some sort of binder.
On the strategic plan, could we get updates more frequently, please? This is great, though some of this is way back. Get updates maybe weekly? If there's something, you know, to present, to give to us as far as a meeting forum that's happened, that's...
All the intentions are there for it, but we are short-staffed in the administrative offices. Barbara's gone for her second operation, so...
Oh, she's gone.
She's recovered.
Yeah.
Do you have any idea when will be regular staff again?
Yeah, we're hoping the middle of November.
Soon.
Now, Dee Trigg is not hired or is hired or...
Dee comes in and helps out, and Dee had her own life's vacation that she had planned.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, we'll move on to action items. Plymouth County OPEB Trust. Do we have any questions? Want to read their package from the last meeting? I will entertain a motion on joining Plymouth County OPEB Trust.
They had a specific motion that they wanted us to make.
That's right.
That's right.
Everybody remembers that when they're reading it.
I forgot to look for that. I thought of it last night.
Thanks, Katie.
Did you get to read it?
Yeah, there were some blank spaces. The question I have is the, I'm sure everyone has it, in paragraph three, it says, "The committee hereby points blank or his or her successor or his or her..." Well, now I can't read it.
That would be Dawn.
Okay.
Yeah, the treasurer, Mr. Treasurer.
So we should call it the treasurer as opposed to Dawn?
Right.
The treasurer.
For children and grandchildren.
Forever and evermore.
The other question I have is, well, the other blank space refers to a date. Committee hereby adopts, I'm just not making the motion yet, just for clarification. Paragraph two says, "The committee hereby adopts the Public Agencies Post Retirement Healthcare Plan Trust," which is all capitals because it is a document as opposed to just a description, "including Public Agencies Post Retirement Healthcare Plan, comma, effective, blank, 2015, the trust." So I would read that to mean that one of the other documents has, must have a date on it. Because I don't know why that, I don't want to make a motion that has a blank space.
Not finding one would be appropriate to use tonight's date of the meeting.
I don't think it's referring to the date of the vote. I think it's referring to the date of the plan, the document that we're incorporating. They're asking us to adopt a specific document, and the implication is that that specific document itself has an effective date. That's how I read it.
What's the name of the document?
Public Agencies Post Retirement Healthcare Plan. It was on the document that was emailed to me, but I didn't pick it up. Okay.
Was it only emailed? Did we have it in paper? I think I have it. Did you have it in paper?
No, we didn't. I don't think we did. Okay.
Maybe when she posted it, can you send one or message something?
I think they really wanted to get this done.
Right.
Can you add that?
I would make the suggestion that we vote and rely on Katie to follow up the phone call in the hopes that she can post it after this vote.
So we can vote with the stipulation of clarification on that blank spot?
You want me to read it?
Yes.
Whereas Monroe Regional School District has accepted the provisions of Mass General Law's Chapter 32b, Section 20, and whereas Plymouth County sponsors the Plymouth County OPEB Trust, also known as PCOTT P., and whereas the district is eligible to participate in PCOT, a program designed to fund post-employment benefits for its employees as specified in the district's policies and/or applicable collective bargaining agreements, and where it is determined to be in the best interest of the district to adopt Public Agencies Post Retirement Healthcare Plan Trust, a tax-exempt trust performing an essential government function within the meaning of Section 115 of the Internal... function within the meaning of Section 115 of the Internal Revenue Code as amended and the relevant statutory provisions of Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and whereas the district's adoption and operation of the program has no effect on a current or former employee's entitlement to post-employment benefits, and whereas the terms and conditions of post-employment benefit entitlement, if any, are governed by a contract separate from and independent of the program, and whereas the district's funding of the program does not and is not intended to create any new vested right to any benefit nor strengthen any existing vested right, and whereas the district reserves the right to make contributions if any to the program, now therefore be resolved, one, the school committee hereby approves participating in Plymouth County OPEB Trust Program, PCOT, and two, the committee hereby adopts the Public Agencies Post Retirement Healthcare Plan Trust, including the Public Agencies Post Retirement Healthcare Plan, effective as of the date that that plan is effective in 2015. All right, effective October 28, 2015, also known as the trust, and the committee hereby appoints the Monmouth Regional School District Treasurer, or his successor, or his or her successor, or his or her designate, as the district's plan administrator for the trust. The plan administrator shall act on behalf of the district in all matters relating to the district's participation in the trust, including but not limited to authorizing the investment of assets in PCOT's investment pool, providing directions to the trustee and/or the trust administrator, and authorizing contributions and dispersals from the district's trust assets. And four, the committee hereby appoints the PCOT Investment Committee for the oversight of investments. And five, the district plan's administrator is hereby authorized to execute the legal and administrative documents on behalf of the district, and to take whatever actions, additional actions are necessary to maintain the district's participation in the trust, and to maintain compliance of any relevant regulations, issues issued, or as may be issued, period. That's the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Brian, I have, listening to it, I wonder if rather than treasurer, it should be superintendent, or the superintendent has to designate the treasurer, because it just seemed odd as I was listening to it, that would you have your treasurer coming up with the designate?
Okay, I'm gonna make a motion to amend, I can't amend my own motion, I need somebody to amend my motion to...
I would...
Amending paragraph three to state the committee hereby appoints the superintendent. Is that your motion?
Yes, it is. Put the words right on it.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Do you want to vote on the amendment?
I feel very comfortable about this, because they said we could get out of it, if we found something better.
Sixty days.
So, it's great.
That was the comment I was gonna make as well, that we're not bound to it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, or abstention? So moved.
The superintendent designates the treasurer.
That was the amendment, now we need to act on the motion.
That was the amendment.
Well, that was the amendment, now we have to vote. Act on the motion. Okay, do it. Okay, we have the original motion, grab a second to the original motion as amended.
I'll second it.
Any other further discussion? Clarifications? All in favor? Closed, abstentions, or abstention? So moved. Unfortunately for us all, we need to go into a very short executive session. Two minutes. So do I have any motion to go into an executive session?
So moved.
Take a roll call, both?
Aye.
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 Aye. We will not be coming back into open meetings after our executive session. Thank you.